We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice as its own.
Ms. Nielsen.
Good morning. Item C2 will need to be polled and brought back at a later date.
Okay. With that, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All those who would like to give public comment? Seeing no public comment? Okay. Seeing public comment?
We have a few problems.
I was trying to help someone who wanted to take the proclamation. She wanted to go first, so I was gonna look. Kent Swatki, I wish to address, I think it's C5, your letter to PG&E. I did make some corrections, I recommended. I had them with me and I left them at home, but you're dealing in the past with PG&E. You want to know why they didn't hook us up to the grid. I want to know when they're gonna hook us up and if they're gonna hook us up. So, I would change that letter to reflect that. The other thing I would put in there also is, and here's a word I think I'm inventing, so still maybe I am, you can let me know. Instead of privatizing, it's publicizing. So, that's what PG&E wants us to do, is publicize them, and you need to get in their heads. Why do they want that? If you go through bankruptcy, they could lose their golden parachutes in retirement. They're gonna do everything they can to force us into, including cutting off our power on a regular basis. Have an issue with that one. So, also, let's see. You have a, I think it's 15, and you are funding your parking lot project out here. And you're funding that with borrowed money. And I always put puzzles together. I wondered why it was pushed so strong by some members here and your CEO, Amy, to go ahead and have the taxpayer and the auditor controller put under that jurisdiction of that. Well, there's tens of millions of dollars in a fund there, and you folks are borrowing that money. And I can understand the desire to do that. It may not be illegal, but the people need to be aware of all these small districts, all the money that's in here. The county has access to that money to use, and I think every three years you're required to revote upon using that money, and I think you're out of compliance with your three years, so I don't know whether you can do it at this time. You may wish to check into that as far as legalities go, may not want to move forward on that until you've gone ahead and crossed your Ts and dotted your Is, because the public, myself, and other people are interested in how much money's in those funds. You're supposed, you have to collateralize those funds. Here's a question. For Kent Swatki, would I buy a Humboldt County bond, tax-free bond, for the county and expect to get it paid off 30 years from now? Answer's no. So, I think you have a fiduciary duty to let the public know and all these small entities know, their money is being borrowed. And as long as there's transparency and it's legal, I don't have a problem with it, but this is something I think everybody should disclose. So, I was kind of disheartened to see it's $5.56 million or something that you currently have, that you can, are using, and you're using about half of that at this time, but I think $18 million was allowed to be used for these projects. And I can see if you need matching funds for the jail project or something here that you guys would be using all of that money. And the small districts' money, then of course, is put at risk should the county not be able to come through with its obligation. So, I'm doing some research on that, and I will have more numbers for you hopefully next meeting from the powers that be. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on that potential cash grab.
Great, thank you. Next.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
As Donna's coming forward, I think there's a little confusion every once in a while on the consent calendar, because it may have numbers, but that's not necessarily how we'd do the proclamation. So, I just, I know there was, looks like faces of confusion out there, and I think Supervisor Wilson might have some of those same thoughts. So, as whatever works for you, I just wanted to say for folks in the audience, that's why it's not necessary.
That's fine. I'm not gonna ask for the vote till you guys read the proclamations, then we can bring them up, or they can come up. It's their option. I know Mr. Wilson talked with his proclamation, I think, to organize it right.
I'm ready to do it.
Well, how about?
There you go.
Retired teachers are so patient.
Good morning. I would like to make a quick comment on the third consent item, the proclamation of, or proclaiming November 15th as Zero Waste Day. My name is Nish Wells. I am a Humboldt State University student working on Zero Waste Humboldt's Refill Not Landfill Project to reduce single-use plastic water bottles. And on behalf of Zero Waste Humboldt, I wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for acknowledging Zero Waste Day. This will be the fifth annual Zero Waste Day, a time for Humboldt residents and businesses to recognize our progress in reducing waste, develop infrastructure necessary to support waste prevention and materials reuse, and to continue adopting new zero-waste habits. Much of our services in the community have been quietly behind the scenes. We've trained more than 50 local businesses in the Zero Waste Method, which has helped them to reduce waste and overhead costs. And in 2020, we will be launching a Zero Waste Business Certification Program. We have raised funds to place 10 water bottle refill stations in local government and high school buildings, which have to date kept over 100,000 single-use plastic water bottles from entering our waste stream. Zero Waste Humboldt has worked with the City of Arcata to develop its Zero Waste Action Plan, and we're now assisting the City of Eureka in developing its plan. Each year, more community groups join us in public education and zero-waste activities. So, again, I'd like to thank you for acknowledging our efforts in reducing waste in Humboldt County.
Great. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. And...
Come back up, you're gonna get something suitable for framing.
And Maggie, if you can, please approach the podium, because I want to acknowledge Maggie and her decades of efforts in this. Not to date us all, but it's been a long road here. So, this is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors related to Zero Waste Day. Whereas residents of Humboldt County have a deep appreciation for the waterways, wildlife, and natural beauty of our county, and whereas Humboldt, we generate over 90,000 tons of waste annually through our everyday habits, business operations, which are costly to handle and endanger wildlife and pollute our natural environment, and whereas Zero Waste Method, which is what we're promoting today, and Sustainable Materials Management emphasize proactive waste prevention to reduce greenhouse gas emissions of manufacturing single-use plastics and overpackaging, and many other things too. Whereas, the County of Humboldt is pleased to have many local organizations working together towards the goal of zero waste. Now therefore, be it resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors joins Humboldt Cities, Businesses, and other groups to recognize November 15th as Zero Waste Day. Each day, we acknowledge the county's waste reduction progress and urge residents to recommit efforts towards zero waste. And I want to say that more and more, we're seeing at all our events, not just recycling, but really how we're not creating waste to begin with. I think that's really important. Really thank you for your efforts in this. I want to encourage everyone to think about this on November 15th, but not just then, but every day. And, you know, we all, we're working on it, feeling a little shame every time we use a single-use plastic, whatever it is, but then turn that shame into action. There you go. Exactly. All right. And I think the other supervisors would like to say something.
I just actually, and I wanted to say thank you as well, but when you talk about Maggie and her years of involvement, I think you were involved in this when my dad was on the board, if I recall. I think you mentioned him in the past, and I thought, that's been a while, but you've made progress. It was slow progress for a while, but I think we're seeing faster change.
And I'm looking forward to us getting our refilling stations here in this building at some point in the future. So, with that, I'm going to present...
We have one right out here that's been there for quite a while.
I use the sink, so. All right.
Just measures everything.
All right. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite the patient retired teachers up that'd like to accept the proclamation. Thank you, Donna, for being here today. I'll read this first, and then you can tell us a little bit about it. I think we all know, you know, how busy teachers are when they're actually in the years of teaching, but after retirement, you guys are really out there in the community. And I can't seem to turn, look through the newspaper without seeing a picture of you guys giving scholarships or something out recently, so that's pretty exciting. So, whereas, the California Retired Teachers Association was formed by Laura E. Suttle in 1929, at the start of the Great Depression, with the goal of relieving the economic hardship suffered by retired teachers, and has since become a leading advocate for providing teachers with enough retirement income for 90 years. Does that mean you get to have 90 years of retirement income? I was gonna say, wow. You had a good plan. So, whereas California Retired Teachers Association also provides continuing support to active and future teachers, including grants, scholarships, and donations of more than $600,000 a year. And whereas, a vast majority of California's retired teachers share a commitment to improve their communities through volunteer activities. And whereas, retired teachers lead by example, including dozens of members who have given more than 4,000 hours of service. And whereas, statewide retired teachers can be found serving their communities in a host of activities. And whereas, here in Humboldt County, local retired teachers volunteer in schools, museums, hospitals, other community organizations, and the food bank, and gave $2,500 in scholarships and $500 to our museums last year alone. And whereas, the annual dollar value of this volunteer time donated through the state by retired teachers reached nearly $58 million during their most recent reporting period. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of the vital role retired teachers fulfill in every community in California, and to honor their ongoing commitment to all teachers, we therefore declare the week of November 3rd through the 9th, 2019, be proclaimed California Retired Teacher Week in Humboldt County.
Thank you to the Board of Supervisors, and I would like to also mention that in addition to retired teachers, and we have two other members here. Okay, let's do the picture, and then I'll make my statement. I do appreciate this proclamation from the board, and I wanted to mention that our local association not only includes retired teachers, but also their supporters, administrators, and staff, both active and retired, and that this organization really is vital to our community. The retired members of our organization usually spend all their money, and they don't keep it under their mattress. They put it out in the community. So, our, so our income really is vital to the economy of Humboldt County. So, we appreciate everything you've done to support us. And I'm sure there are probably other retired people in the audience who can appreciate that as well. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you, since I'm the younger sibling of two ladies that spent 65 years between the two of them in Eureka City School System, one at Jefferson and one at Winship. I appreciate everything. It might have a lot to do why I ended up being a truck driver, because my dad said there was no money left, so, and I wasn't that scholarly anyway. But anyway, thank you guys for everything, spent the first eight years being taught by nuns, and the next four years taught by the public school system. So, you guys are great. You don't carry rollers or pull-on ears. So, Mr. Wilson?
Well, the next one is one more, I think, proclamation. And we talked about this a little bit last week, which is basically the acknowledgement of 50 years of Semper Virens. And are we, is anyone here to receive that today, or you want to do that? I want to, and I went to the celebration of Semper Virens there last week, I guess it was, and, and there was so much education about what that 50 years meant, and actually just how forward-thinking, and really how sort of brave people were moving forward at that time with, with mental health services in Humboldt County. So, I think it's worth a read here. And so, whereas Humboldt County Mental Health and Semper Virens Psychiatric Health Facility are celebrating half a century of community mental health, and I want to emphasize, like, we're still working on stigma issues today, if you can imagine what they may have been 50 years ago, right? And whereas, the Federal Community Mental Health Act of 1963 and the State Community Mental Health Services Act of 1967 began the movement away from institutionalization towards local community-based mental health care. And whereas Humboldt County tirelessly advocates, or tireless advocates such as Gladys Strope led the way to educate the community, destigmatize mental illness, and promote the creation of new community-based services. And whereas, in May 1963, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved and established the first community mental health services in Humboldt County. And whereas, largely staffed by volunteers, Semper Virens Inpatient Psychiatric Unit opened in 1967 on the campus of General Hospital on Harrison Avenue before moving to its present location in 1976. And whereas, in 1969, Humboldt County celebrated these first steps in community mental health by naming a wing of Semper Virens after Gladys Strope and honoring the work of the Humboldt Mental Health Society, a precursor to today's mineral, excuse me, Behavioral Health Board. Semper Virens, whereas Semper Virens is 16, is a 16-bed freestanding acute psychiatric hospital licensed by the California Department of the Healthcare Services, providing comprehensive psychiatric and physical assessment, evaluation, treatment in a safe, secure setting. And I want to remind people, we're the smallest population county that has such a facility in the state of California, and the only one within 300 miles. Whereas, on October 22nd, 2019, more than 60 dedicated Semper Virens employees serving over 500 patients annually with dignity and respect on the journey to recovery, celebrated 50 years of service to the residents of Humboldt County. It is now, therefore, it is now in honor of Semper Virens 50-year anniversary, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby wishes to recognize October 22nd, 2019 as Community Mental Health Day and encourage all citizens to celebrate community-based mental health services and promote, protect, and enhance the health and safety of all residents of Humboldt County. And thank you for being here to receive this. Yep.
Emmy Botsler Rogers, Mental Health Director. Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. I just wanted to echo that it was quite a successful event. It was an opportunity for partners to come together and really honor the work that's been done over the past 50 years and agreed. There's lots that's happened in terms of stigma reduction and lots of work still to happen, so I just want to say that. They were very cutting-edge. I think I said last time that they were looking at training peer partners at that time to help with recovery model 50 years ago, so I think that's really fantastic. And the other highlight was that Gladys Strope's daughter and two of her grandchildren were able to attend the event, so that was really fantastic. So, thank you.
And I will pass this along to you. And I also want to acknowledge a lot of the training that's happening, because we have a lot of our law enforcement here today, and a lot of the training and really advancement in that profession too, in sort of wrapping around and helping each other in this community. And I see a lot of progress in the last some years, and I see that we're gonna be getting better all the time, and I appreciate those efforts.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, no, I appreciate all the work that's been done. I appreciate also Supervisor Wilson sitting on the behavioral board when I, health board when I left, but it has come a long way. And for people to understand that, I think what you mentioned about it being one of the very few, you know, within a vast expansive area, and we are the smallest county that has one, I don't think people really recognize how lucky we are, even though sometimes it's really hard to explain, you know, why that's lucky, and the fact that we're held to 16 beds is still a challenge. And I'd like someday to see us be up here, being able to talk about, being able to provide more services, but I think we do wonderful work, and glad Emmy was surprised she wasn't planning on talking today, and I was surprised you called and asked me to make a comment. But thank you very much, sir. No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, kudos to everybody on this, and also on the Mental Health Crisis Ad Hoc Committee that's been formed here in the county and is meeting regularly to, to work on all of these really critical issues in our community with mental health. So, I just want to make a shout-out to everybody in the community that's working to try and make a change in that arena, and thank you, Emmy, and your department for helping lead that effort. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Just to close out, we are very lucky, but also, it was hard work too, and dedication and perseverance of generations of people. And again, I took a tour of the jail last week and really impressed with the new services there to help, you know, serve that population and really help in those transitions. And I think that this is, this is really important stuff, and I really appreciate all your hard work, so.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yeah, and I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that you have a very tough job, and you have very tough cases, and can be very frustrating for you, for everybody else, but I just admire so much your dedication to do whatever we can, and I echo what Supervisor Bass says, we need more, and that's something we need to look at on a state level as well. But thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thanks. Fifty, a lot has, you talk about how much we've evolved in 50-plus years when Ronald Reagan shut down the hospitals at Napa, because my brother was a resident of Napa, and they were all assigned to come home to their counties of birth, and I was 14-years-old and found out how few programs there were. And, and it has evolved a lot over the last, and, and has actually gone on steroids the last 10 or 12 years, like it's mentioned with mental health through dispatch, made me think of dispatch, and how many they have to talk people off the cliff and everything else. So, hopefully, we keep making the strides we are at the same rate we are. So, thanks.
Through the chair, I have just one comment on, on a consent agenda item before we vote, which is on the letter to PG&E. I would, I would say that the, that I agree with the commenter related to the need for a request for a plan on how things are gonna move forward. I agree with the letter that was sent by Chair Bone and Sheriff Hansel, and I'm glad that we are gonna, we're here today to ratify that, which really just means that we are putting the stamp of the entire board on there, and I appreciate that very much. From my perspective, one more sentence would be, what, what are you gonna do about it? And we don't need it in this letter. We're just gonna ask the, if we can, sort of send the message to our staff, and I know Supervisor Bone's been hammering PG&E on this, as we all have, but what's the plan to, to correct this? And I think we're gonna see action on that, hopefully, in the near future. So, thanks a lot for, you know, shaking the tree and doing it early, but we need, we need a plan too, so appreciate that.
I want to thank the sheriff, and this, this actually started out with the sheriff and St. Joseph's Health Systems, because the critical needs that they milk, and they're going to do their own letter. But we, on the third paragraph where it says PG&E needs to come up with an immediate plan, we're asking for a plan to utilize our local power generation plants to generate the local grid, minimize the impact. I, I thought we asked for a plan. We can ask for another plan, but, you know. Well, and then, we strongly urge PG&E to hold a public forum in Humboldt County, at the very least, come to a Board of Supervisors meeting, so we'll be able to have that dialogue. With that being said, without the, PG&E somewhere in there stands for non-committal, but they do have, since the first shout-out, I do know they have engineers working on the, on the system. I firmly believe, I think they thought it was gonna work, because they told us, we're going to try to power up the plant and backfill the grid. I think they found out it didn't. I'm, I'm not sure. People are saying we should have sent the letter. We're not electrical engineers, and they're a private company, but I think we're getting the responses we need, the local, again, I will say kudos to the local management, and who were very responsive through this whole time, and keeping us informed. The talking heads, not so much. They were telling us out of Santa Rosa what was gonna happen, and it didn't happen, but we've got better information from our local people. So, I think, at the end of the day, I think we'll wait for a response. There's 37 counties asking for the same thing we asked for. Little do you know, we're not the only ones. We're one of the few that got impacted that didn't have any weather impacts. That's the problem. And since we decided to host their nuclear wastes and their power plant, they should be a better partner, as it's mentioned in the letter. So, if we don't hear anything in a week, we will sit and send another letter, but I expect to have more dialogue. I did get a response from the letter on Friday afternoon that said they were working on a formal response to us. So, I appreciate that. I mean, we were all under the mythology that, you know, every, we all believed, and we were told to believe, and we believed it, that, that we had this separation, that we had this island, Energy Island, and I think, I think there are many people within PG&E who are just as shocked as, as we were, that, that larger bureaucracy just didn't perform in the way that they thought it would, and so I'm looking forward to their response, and thank you for getting on it. Well, at the end of the day, if nothing else, Humboldt shined all the way through the OES office, through the Sheriff's Department, our cooperation with our local municipalities and our local utilities. And big shout-outs to everybody that went, we asked, and you went and knocked on that senior or that person that needed help. And for all you guys that ran around your neighborhoods with that little Honda generator in the back of your truck going, you want to plug in your freezer and, for a couple hours, so it lasts, that's, that's truly Humboldt, so thank you for that. I think we, we survived, and there were a lot of inconveniences, but at the end of the day, we're all here.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yeah, I very definitely want to thank the sheriff and the Office of Emergency Services in general. I think right from the very beginning, our message was strong and clear, this is not appropriate, and we need it addressed, and I think that this letter is just underlining it, and we will push forward. The RCEA is also very involved with this. I think that, that, you know, in a way, it was a good trial run for us in terms of just how dependent we are on electricity and how resilient we must make ourselves into the future. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to keep pushing on this, and we will, for sure, and I think we're gonna see some change pretty quickly.
Next year, you can give me hell, but I pretty much guarantee, I, I think we won't have this issue next year, so. Because I think we're gonna be on this, so, anyway.
On it.
We'll stay on it and see what they bring forward, and we can discuss this next week and see what's going on, and by next week, maybe we'll have some more information. So, anyway, again, thanks to everybody that made it work, except for those guys in the ivory tower.
All right. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? None? Thank you very much. All right. I'd like public items pulled from consent, but it's completely pulled, so we'll go to public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have a sheet? Nish Wells from Zero Waste, she already talked. Rick Pellren?
Rick Pellren. The Humboldt County Planning Department has promised to provide written copies of the Humboldt Wind Project Final Environmental Impact Report to the citizens of this county on yesterday, November 4th, but that promise was not kept. The Riadale Public Library was closed yesterday, November 4th, and won't open until today. Therefore, the public had no way to get the document that we need for the upcoming public meeting that will be held Thursday, November 7th. It's bad enough... It's bad enough that there is only one document for the entire city of Riedel with 3,300 residents, but worse yet is the fact that the document has not even arrived yet and may not even arrive until today or even tomorrow, basically leaving us only one day to read the entire document. That's kind of a joke, don't you agree? Is the planning department that incompetent? No, I don't, I don't feel they are. I think they're real savvy people, but I don't know that their actions could be intentional, meant to deprive the 3,300 residents of Riedel of their constitutional right to enter into an informed discourse on this important issue. Read it online, the planning department told me. So I went online and was completely overwhelmed by folders and subfolders and links that led me all over the place while giving me little information. Now, I'm a smart enough guy, I think, but I am one person who really needs to have the FEIR in book form in order to read and understand it. Additionally, I think that of the 3,300 residents of Riedel, there are many who would agree with me that the FEIR needs to be provided in book form. Many people simply don't have a computer or don't have Wi-Fi, or if they do, like me, they will be unable to navigate the complex document online. Now, this brings me to my second point. The city of Riedel needs to be provided with 10 doc, 10 copies of the FEIR, not one, to serve the 3,300 residents of our city and we really need a 21-day extension of time so that we can read and understand the document and be able to discuss it intelligently. I understand that the Humboldt Wind Project developers are pushing for approval before the end of the year, this year, but that is no excuse to take away the rights of the people of Riedel and the rights of the people of Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lynette Mullen.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lynette Mullen and I am the community liaison for Nordic Aqua Farms and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and express my appreciation today. As many of you may know in the audience and of course the supervisors know, the Board of Directors for Nordic Aqua Farms gave the green light last week for Nordic to move ahead into the permitting phase of their land-based fish farm on the Samoa Peninsula. What you also know as at points along this project, when they're doing the due diligence, we didn't necessarily know that this project was going to move forward. The due diligence phase was designed really for them to study in-depth the conditions here, the infrastructure, the challenges that they may face, and during that process they became aware of some challenges that we had regarding our infrastructure, just deferred maintenance and things quite frankly, we didn't even necessarily know about until Nordic came in. And frankly, that could have stopped the project, but instead of it stopping the project when the county supervisors and the county staff became aware of these issues, county staff actually, sorry, county supervisors actually directed county staff to work with local agencies along with their different various departments, planning, economic development, et cetera, and the water district, the harbor district, to address these issues. You took that action, which was very much appreciated. You even went further in writing a letter that you directed to Nordic's Board of Directors assuring them that this community was interested in the project, that you were committed to addressing the infrastructure issues, not only for Nordic's project, but the bigger economic development in Humboldt County, and I truly believe that made a difference. That was the assurance that this company needed to move forward in Humboldt County and they have. So now we're looking at them moving forward with a $400 million project. We're looking at construction jobs that I haven't even calculated yet, we're looking at over 80 full-time jobs when the project is built out, and we're looking at other opportunities. Because Nordic is looking at coming in here, other companies are also interested. We are addressing the infrastructure challenges that those companies might have faced and I think this is opening wonderful doors for Humboldt County. So thank you very much and thank you to your staff.
Thank you. Vivian Denniston. Okay.
My name is Vivian Denniston and I reside in Eureka. I'm a proud member of my union SEIU Local 2015, which represents over 400,000 IHSS workers, nursing homes and private agency workers in California. But today, I am here as the Regional Vice President for all of Northern California. And why? Well, to refresh your memories, we were in negotiations with you for a raise for over two years, when we finally reached an agreement in July, but yet the providers in Humboldt County have not received that raise. It's been four months, so you need to honor your commitment to us and we know that things happen, but we're, we are committed to doing the right thing for all of the providers in Humboldt County. But sadly, those minimum wage providers lost approximately $100,000 in wages because we didn't receive the raise and that's a loss for Humboldt County too, because we know that minimum wage workers spend their money in the community to which they reside. So somebody did not submit the proper paperwork to the state of California, that's the reality. And tonight, I have a member meeting to, as the Regional Vice President, I need to explain to those providers why they haven't gotten a raise and what happened. Honestly, I would like a better explanation than the state's, which was the incorrect paperwork. It was incomplete. So I am hoping that one of you will give me a call today, tell me what happened, so that I can give an honest answer to those workers in Humboldt County that were so excited in July to find out they were getting a raise and it's November and nothing. Thank you. I'll give you my card.
Thank you. Next.
You got to give me the cue, Rex. You say anybody not on the list can come speak now, then I step in front of somebody. Thank you. FYI, Mike, 7,725 people have used that bottle refilling thing we have right out here to fill the bottles up. I do it with my dog water for my dogs recycle my bottles. I did wish to back, you know, I was the person in your thanking you when we finally confirmed the IHHS thing. Somebody dropped the ball and as far as I'm concerned, that person should make up that $100,000 difference out of her pocket or out of your general fund. I mean, that's only right, when someone makes a mistake. She didn't drop the ball when you guys got your raise and she got hers, I mean, everything went right on through. I hate to have to be that way, Virginia, but I'm going to continue to be that way, you know, just what I will do. I did wish to make some comments regarding the turbines out there and the big project coming up, the Terigen project out there. When I come here, I'm expected to make nine copies of, for you to have in your records. I think Riedel or these areas should get nine copies so that people can read them. I talked to some very sharp people and they could not locate that particular document on Friday. They were going to work through the whole weekend, it's 5,000 pages is my understanding and as you heard, it's not an easy thing to find or navigate, so hard paper copies are something that people can have and pick up, a lot of us still use that. So that's appreciated, you know, especially on a project of this great nature and this size. I did wish to read, this is what's happening on Thursday and this is very troublesome to me, the project in its description on the agenda, this is pulled off your website, "The exact footprint of individual WTGs within the project site would be determined during final engineering design, but would generally be placed along monument and bare ridges. Turban heights could reach up to 600 feet tall with a total diameter of 492 feet." This project does not have the specificity to even have a sequa document. We can't tell what the impacts are, do we know where they are? Are they all in one cluster? Are they all over? They may not even be on those ranges according to the information that was provided to the public here. I can't understand how things like this can be so general and lack the specificity for someone to understand a project of this magnitude. By this time, this should be totally clear to the public. Lastly, I'm going to say, this is kind of a test for me. I'm not mentioning names, but some people wanted to have a ridge-line scenic thing where we wouldn't have any impacts on the ridge-lines. And I think we're in litigation on that, maybe that's a lawsuit because these were last-minute things to potentially be added to the general plan update. So now my test is to see if anybody who was in favor of that is going to be hypocritical, who's in favor of not having our ridge-lines broken down with things in them and whether that person will vote for this project or just say no, because to me.
Thank you.
This is something no more obvious place than there. Thank you for my opportunity, Rex.
Thanks, you bet.
Thank you, John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. I did just want to notify the public, citizens of Riedel and the Board of Supervisors that it is true that the library was closed yesterday. Today, there will be a printed copy and electronic version of the EIR in the Riedel Library. It is a large document, we'd be willing to print copies for people who want copies printed, but the cost of printing one of those documents is really expensive and so we have chosen to minimize the number of documents that we print for that reason. We are, however, making sure that hard copies are available in the libraries for people to be able to go and look at. Also, with respect to the public hearing notice that was identified there, one of the very important things to understand is that was the original notice that was provided as part of the application, that application include a process, included a process that is spelled out in the DEIR and the FEIR, that the project would be refined throughout the process and the actual locations of the turbines are now determined, that is reported in the FEIR. So, one of the things that will be important for people to follow in the meeting on Thursday night is just the process that this project has gone through to get to where it is and how the project impacts have been evaluated. I don't want to be defensive, but I think that there has been a high degree of analysis that has been completed on this to this, to get it to the point where it's at. Thank you.
Chair.
It's not on the agenda. Is it not?
No, I wanted to, Supervisor Bone.
Please.
Actually, no, I just, how do I put this, not wanting to get involved in comments that came on, it's not on the agenda. What I want to recommend is that speakers not so pointedly try to put blame on one specific person, or, okay, I'll be completely clear, our CIO has been getting like, you know, just beat on for everything as part of our job, but this item that they brought to us today, she had nothing to do with when that paperwork got in. I just wanted to say that I felt it was not appropriate and the speaker actually said, yes, Virginia, that's what I'm going to do and I was like, okay, that's your right, but I just want to say that I feel this in this instance, I do feel the need to definitely say I don't think that was an accurate thing and we are on that and we will be checking on that. Okay.
Supervisor Fennell.
Just a very quick note to residents of Riedel and anybody else interested in the final environmental impact report. Going online, please just go to the Planning and Building Department, you'll find under the Humboldt Wind Project, the final environmental impact report. It's actually pretty simple, you clip on any one of the chapters that you're interested in and it's in black and white, so it's, if you don't want to look around a whole bunch of paper, this is a very good way to look at this and especially in terms of the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to special presentations. Mr. Berry. Want to come up here? As he says, no.
We have a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt, whereas in 1986 Greg Berry was hired as a police officer for the Visalia Police Department where he honorably served until 1994, whereas in 1996 Greg Berry was hired as a reserve police officer for the Trinidad Police Department where he served until 1998. On May 14th, 1998 Greg Berry was hired as a Humboldt County Sheriff's Officer Deputy II, and whereas on July 13th, 1998 Greg Berry completed his FTO program and was assigned to the Orleans Resident Post. Whereas in 2006 Greg Berry transitioned from working in the Orleans Resident Post to working in the greater Trinidad River area. And whereas Greg Berry worked in the Trinidad River area for the remainder of his time at the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, establishing relationships with that community, providing an old-fashioned level of customer service and representing their agency positively with his community-oriented policing approach and leaving very big, very big shoes to fill. And whereas Greg Berry worked with the tribal governments to ensure public safety, needs were met on tribal land, Deputy Berry formed a bond with the Karuk, the Urok and the Hoopaw tribal communities that was built on mutual respect and trust. Whereas Greg Berry was also, was always approachable, his career in law enforcement with passion, enthusiasm, a sense of humor and most of all compassion for those he served and those he served with. Now therefore, we resolve that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, Sheriff William F. Hansel and the staff of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office hereby commends and thanks Greg Berry for his dedicated 21 years of selfless service to the citizens of Humboldt County and the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. We all wish him well in retirement, you will be missed.
Move it. Move the resolution.
Second. Second.
Move to the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Do we have a comment? No. Kim three?
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Rex, for not making any joke about 1986, calling and wanting their jacket back. I was once a young man in about 1985 and that was when I started this journey in law enforcement and I became friends with an older officer who sort of mentored me and I got to know and that man I believe told me he was hired in about 1958 or 59 to begin his career in law enforcement. So you hear him. He shared these words with me and I'd like to go over these now. He always told me that, when he showed me these words, he told me that if I followed these words, I would turn out to be an okay police officer. So this is, I'm going to read this, this is Tecumseh, Tecumseh's poem. Tecumseh lived from March 1768 to October 5th, 1813 and was a Shawnee warrior and chief. He is the one credited with this poem, Live Your Life. Live your life that the fear of death can never enter your heart. Trouble no one about their religion, respect others in their view and demand that they respect yours. Love your life, perfect your life, beautify all things in your life. Seek to make your life long and its purpose in the service of your people. Prepare a noble death song for the day when you go over the great divide. Always give a word or a sign of salute when meeting or passing a friend, even a stranger when in a lonely place. Show respect to all people and grovel to none. When you arise in the morning, give thanks for the food and for the joy of living. If you see no reason for giving thanks, the fault lies only in yourself. Abuse no one and no thing, for abuse turns the wise ones to fools and robs the spirit of its vision. When it comes your time to die, be like no, be not like those who hearts are filled with the fear of death, so that when their time comes they weep and pray for a little more time to live their lives over again in a different way. Sing your death song and die like a hero going home. When I go back to Willow Creek, I will post this on the wall of the station. When you arise in the morning, give thanks for the food and for the joy of living. If you see no reason for giving thanks, the fault lies only in yourself. Abuse no one and no thing, for abuse turns the wise ones to fools and robs the spirit of its vision. When it comes your time to die, be like no-- be not like those who hearts are filled with the fear of death, so that when their time comes, they weep and pray for a little more time to live their lives over again in a different way. Sing your death song and die like a hero going home." When I go back to Willow Creek, I will post this on the wall of the station in Willow Creek where I took it. I try to share this with as many young people, starting this adventure as I possibly can. Thank you all so very much.
Oh, yeah, we'll get a picture. Lots of pictures later. Supervisor Bone, thank you. Supervisor, just thank you for honoring Greg here. Thirty-three years of law enforcement. And he looks pretty good, doesn't he? Two worn out, right?
Like, Greg, you saved the 30 bucks. I noticed you shaved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, he does have blue hair, so I just want to point that out. So yes, it is No Shave November, so we do, we do do that. So that's why I'm unshaving a lot of other deputies here. But anyway, Greg has done, you know, 21 years of selfless service here in Humboldt County and in the Trinity River Division. He is admired. And so, actually Supervisor Madrona and I are at a meeting last night in Willow Creek, and several people brought up, well, you know, can you tell us when Greg Berry works? Because, you know, he seems to connect with us and, you know, he's not like the newer deputies. He really takes time and cares, and he's talking to a lot of stuff. And then I told him, I said, "Well, just so you know, Greg retired last week. He's done." And you should see, and the air got sucked out of the room. They couldn't believe it. He can't leave. He's been the mayor here in Willow Creek for how many years? So, anyway, but he has made an impact on people up there. And it's the things that, you know, that aren't really tangible kind of things, but it's the relationships that he's built with that community and the respect that he's built with that community. And anyone you ask, and the positive interactions and the tracks he leave behind there will be remembered for years and years. And so I really, really appreciate his service and his time that he's dedicated to actually train the new guys over there and teach them the ways of the Trinity River Division and how it's unique. And so I really, really appreciate that. And he's got a great turnout here to honor him. And we're going to have some cake here next door. But I really appreciate Greg and his family, and so--
Thank you.
And he's not going away, so we're going to try and get him back. All right.
As the Karuk people say, "Au towa."
Thank you.
Any of the other in the Bob Uecker seats? You guys always stand along the wall. I don't know what it is, but anybody want to say anything?
If you like a hurricane, you better.
I'll bring it back to the board.
Supervisor Wilson, then Madrona?
I just want to say that there's no way that with all my fumbling of words and things today that I could say it any better than you did with regards to your service and your self-awareness and that. And I really appreciate your service to helping keeping the fabric of our society together in the way that you have. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, there's really no better recognition than when a community steps up and says, "No, you can't leave. Where are you going? What are you thinking here?" But it really was unanimous. I think there was about 50 people there last night in the Community Service District building, and they were all honoring you and your work with that community. And that just speaks volumes about your personality. So thank you for all you've done for that community.
Supervisor Fennel?
So Greg, I don't know where you are now, but-- thank you so much for sharing what inspired you, because it was very, very inspiring. And please keep sharing it. And it just talks so much about heart and courage and what it takes to be a servant of the people and help and be a guardian of the community and work with them. So thank you very much for your service. I really, well, I wish you would have been down in Soho once in a while, but that's okay. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Bass?
Actually, I think Supervisor Fennel did a wonderful conveying the thoughts of, you know, what you read. And I thought, oh, when you started reading, it's like, oh, this is like really old, right? And it's like, wow, it's more true today than it was then. And how great it is for you to have that as your inspiration and that you want to share that with others. So, and I'm glad to hear you may be back. And I mean, you may not think you're going to be back, but it sounds like others might have different plans. And to be so, to receive such high praise from a community that you've been in that actually is really unhappy you're leaving, I think that says a lot about who you are, not just as in your job, but who you are as a person.
Greg, how you doing, buddy? I think the sheriff mentioned it, and we always do this, but I think the family needs to be thanked. Because when you're a resident deputy, you're, you know, you're the cook. You're the bottle washer. You get to clean up after everybody. And there's no such thing as a 40-hour week. You don't get to go to Bob's Shopping Center and just pick something up. It's a venture, you know? And it's a venture for your family. Go, hey, could you tell Greg that there's a car part? And I think they care. I think they should have little badges too, you know? I talked about when you pulled me over when you were young and just got up there, and I tried to explain to you that those big trucks always look like they're going faster than they actually are. Yeah, you didn't buy that either. I think you did a great job. I've got a lot of friends up there. I think you distributed your lay of the land very well, because I think you had wide respect up there, as has been mentioned. And I like the fact that you may be sticking around and passing on, if nothing else, passing on your wisdom and your overview to the younger officers coming up, which I think is so important, because it's a different world. You've seen a lot change in the last 30 years on how, and how we administer law enforcement and how they expect us to, expect you guys to administer. And I think you do a great job in exemplifying that. So thanks. Enjoy a little bit of time for yourself, though, okay? Thanks, Greg. Any public, did we do public comment? We did that. So with that, let's give them one more big hand, you guys. And as they say, let them eat cake.
Appointment of the 2020 delegate and alternate to rural county reps of California?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here again. Once again, the agenda item before you is for your board to consider making an appointment of a delegate and an alternate to rural county representatives in California, as well as the Golden State Finance Authority Board of Directors. Your current members serving are Supervisor Bone, who is serving as an ex officio officer, and Supervisor Fennel, who is currently serving as the alternate. And I do believe both of them are still interested in being reappointed for the 2020 calendar year. With that, I'll turn it over to your board.
Thank you. Supervisor Madrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would move to appoint Supervisor Bone as the delegate and Supervisor Fennel as the alternate for the coming year. RC, RC.
Two seconds.
Move to second it. Any public comment on this? Seeing none? It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? And thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
CIO's office on--
Before your board today is the proposed board meeting calendar for 2020. Changes this year include canceling meetings following a Monday holiday, as the public does not have access to staff to ask questions. In addition, also noted on the 2020 calendar are the Monday meeting dates that your board holds for your department head evaluations. And so those are the changes to the 2020 calendar, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, one is, it's not a question, it's just a comment that there is the Nico Ledge Conference, but I don't know, there are probably just maybe two going. But that, I think, sometimes has been included.
We have a break for, oh, not the Ledge Conference. We have the annual conference in July.
Yeah, July in Florida sounds like a lovely place. But the other question I was going to ask is, this came up this week when I was at the homelessness workshop or summit yesterday in Sacramento. And we were talking about board meetings, because several of us had to get back because we had our board meetings. And so we started talking about how, the frequency of board meetings. And it's, people were really surprised we actually do them weekly. And so I'm just curious, I mean, I don't mind. I think it's great. We get to see everybody. People get an opportunity to come in, visit with us, and hear what's going on. But sometimes we could be doing a lot of work in there as well. So I didn't know if there's ever been any thought of, in the future, could that look different? And I don't know if you hear other things when you talk to your CIO groups.
So your board does meet almost every Tuesday, and that does appear to be a little bit atypical. There are larger counties that will meet the first and third Tuesdays or the second and fourth Tuesdays. And so really, it's at your board's discretion on how frequently you would like to meet. Those meetings typically, for those other counties, are all-day meetings, when they meet about twice a month. So it's up to your board if you would like me to return with a different calendar or if you would like me to do some additional research on what other counties are doing.
I'm-- Supervisor Fennel?
Well, I would be hesitant to change it. I think that with the pace of what we're taking on in the county and so many items, even when we take a day off, it's a, it can turn the calendar a little bit wazzy. So I think that we're so much, there's so much going on in the county. We need to have that meeting so we can move items forward. So already, there are several Tuesdays we won't be meeting, according to this calendar. So my feel would be that we stick with what we have.
Supervisor Madrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I too think we ought to stick with the schedule as is. And it's true that a lot of times we have half-day meetings. But when we do all-day meetings, it's tiring. And I think we, it's more difficult to make a really sound decision when you get really tired and have an all-day meeting like that. So I agree with you, Supervisor Fennel, that there's so much work going on in the county. I don't see it slowing down anytime soon with all our economic development and everything else. And I do prefer the schedule as it is, because it gives us a lot of leeway to really delve into these issues more deeply and make as sound a decision as we possibly can before we get too tired. But just a thought.
And we, we actually meet on about 72, 73% of the Tuesdays. But we've got 15 Tuesdays off, it looks like. So if you do the math, we take--
And through the chair, though. We are, and we used to plant them with Mondays. That's, I think the conversation that was going on, and I'm not saying for this year, I'm saying in the future, if anyone was interested. Other counties pointed to the burden of staff, that it is a constant churning. And so sometimes that actually becomes more of an issue. And then also, I think their thought was if they had that latitude that they have missed meetings, and then they can plug meetings in if it comes up. But I'm not even saying for this year. I just thought, I've had that conversation a few times, and just wanted to toss it out there. And so maybe in the future, it might be something they're interested in.
And if people from the public start coming to us and say, "You guys meet way too much. Maybe we should look at it." But-- Mr. Wilson?
I want, do want to acknowledge, though, that one thing that the public may not understand about that, having the meetings every week and why some counties have moved to every other week is, as what was brought up, the, it's a burden on staff, but that's a cost. I mean, that, there, you know, every time this is administered, this, you know, act of having a meeting, there is a lot of upfront costs, that's just the overhead that you lose in every one of those meetings, that you can be more efficient if there are less of them, and which is why many counties have moved to that. I'm not suggesting that we do. I just want to really acknowledge that there, having a meeting every week has a cost to our budget and a cost to the time of our staff when they might be actually doing other things, kind of relating to the overhead of having a meeting. So there's the upfront and the breakdown of both of those things, on both sides administratively and, you know, bureaucratically. And we need to acknowledge that. And I just, we can have this discussion another time if someone feels like it, but I want to, want to make sure that, understand these meetings are not free. So they cost money.
It's government. Nothing's free. Okay. Public comment? Did you have something, Supervisor Fennel?
No, no, no.
Okay.
You're having too many meetings. Isn't that what you wanted me to say? Does that make you happy, Virginia? Now I made you mad before, now maybe that made me. There are a lot of times when you guys don't need a meeting. And I would consider an alternative to what it is, just because Supervisor Wilson said the cost. You have minimal meetings. I mean, we've had hour-and-a-half meetings before, you know? And that's, unless there's a time-critical thing, there really isn't a meeting for that. I have no problem with you doing like first and third. You know, it's, I don't like special meetings all the time. We have sometimes get the Harbor District 24-hour notice, and nobody knows, and they do stuff without us knowing. And as Rex pointed out, I think there's 37 out of, if there's still 52 weeks in the year, 37 meetings this year. In December, we only have two meetings, right? We have three this month and two in December. So functionally, I think we could get by with them. I do understand, but I've seen some very poor decisions, in my opinion, when you've been there for six or seven hours at an all-day meeting. You want to get out of here, and that's human nature, you know? And I do support the concept of that. But there are other times when we have back-to-back two-and-a-half, three-hour meetings at the most, and I think those could be consolidated. I mean, I think your staff is capable of going through and finding when you have certain time periods, if you have certain months, where you have kind of a lull, and we have very short meetings, three really short meetings during the month, combine them to two. I'd support that. I have no problem with that. I did, I do want to mention one thing. It's appreciated by the public when the chair announces certain, certain person is not here today, and we feel like we're not being shined, because somebody knew they were going to have a meeting and went off on a pre-planned vacation, even though you know a year in advance when your meetings are. And say, this person is off at Washington, DC, doing some wonderful work for us. And that's always a good thing to announce to the public, so we're not sitting here, well, what the heck's going on, you know? So-- And lastly, I like to say, you know, these decisions, and all decisions, the buck stops here. And so any of us will look at a decision, and when you're making your decisions, and if we, if we get a read on a certain person who's feeling guilty about something, and then somebody gives a scrunched-up face, that will be brought forward. I'm very good at reading the public. So I did, I did appreciate the buck stopping here, and I can stop here less frequently if you guys think you can make it work. And it's a possibility. I've been here as, as long as, I think, Virginia and I are the only two people who are here when I first started coming now. Pretty old, aren't we, Virginia? Yeah, pretty well. That's what it was. And I've seen a tendency that you might get by with less meetings. So that's an option.
All right. Supervisor Fennel?
So a couple of things. I really think we need to, I'm going to go on the record as saying, once again, I, until I see something different, we need to keep with this. And I will tell you, speaking of special meetings, we had days off, and then we had to come in here for a special meeting because of specific timelines. So every meeting is chock-a-block full of contracts and time-delineated objects that have to be addressed. Every time we bring an issue up, it has to come back, you know, 30 days, 60 days, 45 days, whatever. I can guarantee you that if we have less meetings, more of the issues that we're working on will be pushed out further. And I think this is part of running the county smoothly. And if it's the cost of running the county smoothly, I support it.
Mr. Chair? Okay. Supervisor Madrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also curious, Supervisor Bass, in your work with CSAC, do you find that any of the boards have evening meetings? Because in my short term here on this board, I've had many constituents say, why do you guys always have your meetings at 9:00 in the morning when we're all going to work and there's no way we can possibly participate? And so I want us to consider that this meeting schedule isn't just about us. It isn't just about staff. It is also about the public and their access to us and the agenda and the rest of it. So has that ever been considered? Or do you find that other boards around the state do evening meetings for those reasons? Or--
You know, through the chair--
The Planning Commission meets in the evening.
Yeah. Actually, I haven't had a lot of specific information. I do believe there's some that maybe do like one evening meeting a month or something. And I don't know, maybe Supervisor Bone knows more. I haven't really had that specific conversation. I think, you know, part of what's different between city councils and supervisors is, well, some of it is the workload, the amount of staff, you know? So while it may not always be convenient for the public, it's also, it's hard to find a time that's going to work for everybody. You know, a lot of people, when they go home at night, don't want to leave again to come to a meeting.
That's right.
You know? And we might find that, too. We may not-- You know? And we might find that, too. We may not... You know, it's kind of hard.
There's no way.
I could look... I could ask more. I mean, this is looking for... Into the future, and I could definitely ask, because I know people do request that. See if we could do that occasionally. And I think there's probably some counties that do things differently. Oh, anyway, there's always those costs that...
We have had meetings in the evening with the general plan update, you know?
Sure. Yeah, we've had some workshops.
Budget, workshops, those kinds of things.
That's great. Okay. Well, with that, I would move that we approve the meeting schedule that is in front of us, provided by the staff.
Second.
With that.
Sorry, go ahead. I got clarification about one of the problems with evening meetings. These employees, when they're here, have to be volunteers? I'm going through the CIO. It's like, what? I can't explain it myself. Ask her.
Part of the reason city councils meet in the evenings are city council members are unpaid, and therefore, they are typically employed during the day, and they are volunteers, which means they need to volunteer in the evening, and that is why they have evening meetings. Boards of supervisors are typically full-time, paid staff, and therefore, that is why your meeting is during the day. You also typically have a much longer agenda, and therefore, a meeting time starting at six o'clock. It would actually be pretty difficult to get through that agenda.
What she says.
What she says.
And I'll still look into it.
And just for your... I don't know of anybody on the RCRC, because one of the issues, that nighttime meeting, I know a lot of the times, I'll have a meeting on, you know, once a month. I'll have a meeting on Tuesday, and then I drive to Sacramento after the meeting. And it's just... I still drive there. I'd be like a mess the next day, probably. But with that being said, it's just, as I said, and since government takes place during the day, a majority of it, it's just a hard deal. I know this conversation's come up a few times, though. So... And the issue being is, is just what I said, if we even chose a few meetings to hold, you know, once every two months, or once a month, if there's nothing on it that's controversial, we would be looking at crickets out there and slide right through it. So you'd have to, you know, so... All right. It's been moved and seconded.
Through the chair, I do agree that sometimes having a special meeting in the evening, like a workshop on a very particular project, like the general plan, has been one of the ways that we've helped do that and get more public engagement. So I'm good with it.
I believe we approve the suggested schedule. Has that been already approved, moved?
Yes, we've moved it.
We'll give you the third.
Sorry, you did before. We got so carried away with the other conversation.
It's been moved and seconded, and moved again. There's a lot of movements on this.
It's perfect.
It's a movement.
It's a movement.
We're all having self-awareness problems.
Hold on, favorite?
Aye.
Opposed?
Conversation at a life of its own.
Thank you. All right. Next item. Assess potential road improvements projects near Rio Del using funding from the wind energy project.
Good morning, Chair Board, Chair Bone, and members of the board. Get that right. There's a lot of self-reflection going on.
Just go. You're already there.
My name is Sean Quincy. I'm Deputy County Administrative Officer with the Humboldt County Administrative Office. I've already heard a little bit about the wind project, so I don't want to go too much into it. But as your board knows, Humboldt Wind is currently... Has currently proposed to construct and operate a wind energy project just south of Rio Del in Scotia. The project would construct up to forty-seven wind turbines and produce up to one-hundred-and-fifty-five megawatts of electricity, and as proposed, would encompass one-hundred-and-twenty-four parcels, beginning west of Highway 101, extending east to Bridgeville at the PG&E substation. The project is currently in the review process, and there is a public hearing coming up later this week, as a matter of fact. The project, if approved, also has the potential to generate significant new one-time and ongoing revenue for the county, though the amount is unknown at this time. On October 2nd, the City of Rio Del sent Supervisor Fennell a letter requesting that the county consider a proposal approved by the city council that would result in the county funding a road improvement project of Monument Road, which you can see on the map. A portion of this road falls within the city limits. The letter proposes that the county consider the idea, as the road would likely experience increased usage during and after construction of the wind project. Adding to this need is the fact that Monument Road has been problematic for many years, and a portion of this road is even scheduled to be repaired with FEMA funding. Financially, this project is likely to be costly, perhaps at least one to two million dollars. The action before your board would direct staff to perform a full assessment to include estimating one-time and ongoing revenue for the project, as well as assessing the cost of the project itself. Such an assessment will require the county staff in the assessor's office, treasurer, tax collector, public works, and county administrative office work with Humboldt Wind and other outside agencies, such as HDL and state agencies, to gather necessary information. There is sufficient funding in each of these departments' budgets in this fiscal year to perform this assessment. We have county staff here, and I believe the representatives from the City of Rio Del to begin the discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
I see Kyle Knopf is here from...
You want to take it?
Welcome, Kyle. Kyle Knopf is the City Manager for the City of Rio Del. And we have been talking about this. And you can explain to us why you think it's important.
The mayor's here, too.
And Mayor Garance is here, too. So absolutely.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Bone, members of the board. My name is Kyle Knopf, and I'm the City Manager for the City of Rio Del. I want to take a quick second to thank Supervisor Fennell for bringing this item to your board. We very much appreciate it. This whole board has been very supportive of Rio Del in many ways, most notably with the preservation of library services in the community recently, despite many challenges, ADA access being just one of them. So thank you to this board. Simply put, this item is about rehabilitating Monument Road, a goal that's in everyone's interests. I'm not here to discuss the city's position on the Terregen Wind Energy Project. The position of the city on the draft EIR is in writing. And I'm happy to provide a copy of that letter to anyone who asks. We're currently reviewing the final EIR, which was released yesterday, and I understand that there is a presentation before the Planning Commission this Thursday on the project. Monument Road, like many of the rural roads in Humboldt County, is in serious need of investment. Many sections of the road were built using wood retaining walls and posts, all of which are failing. Specifically, the section of roadway I am referring to is about twenty-eight hundred feet in length and traverses both the unincorporated county and into the City of Rio Del, about nine hundred feet. The road very nearly catastrophically failed during the rainstorms of 2017. While that damage is being repaired using FEMA funding, it is only a matter of time before other sections of the road also fail. Ranchers, the timber industry, sightseers, and numerous residents, the majority of which live in the unincorporated county, all regularly use this road and depend upon it. If built, the wind energy project will see increased use of the road. It would be the shortest route to the turbines, a fact that any subcontractor working on the project will get to know very quickly. Over the thirty-year lifespan of the proposed project, you can just imagine the throngs of gawkers that will venture up Monument Road to see some of the tallest structures between San Francisco and Seattle. It will be an impressive sight, especially close up on these public roads. And there will be an impact to Monument Road, even if the intent on paper in the EIR says otherwise. As detailed in our October 2nd letter to Supervisor Fennell, assertions have been made about the windfall revenues the county will receive if this project moves forward. Our proposal is simple. The project moves forward... If the project moves forward, and the county receives sufficient revenue from the project, Monument Road should become the number-one first priority for the proceeds from this project, including the section of Monument Road just inside of Rio Del city limits, upon which many of the unincorporated residents rely upon. We propose a formal binding agreement between the city and the county to help compel this outcome. The Rio Del City Council is eager to hear the board's position on this proposal. I would just add one more thing before concluding, which is, after hearing some of the concerns from... Directly from Director Mattson regarding the request that the county also assume ongoing responsibility for the maintenance of the road, I have talked to my city council, and that position has been pulled. So I want to thank you again for your... This board's commitment to the City of Rio Del. You've been great partners, and we want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay. I will open it up to public comment.
Guys, tall. Ken Stowatsky, according to the letter from Rio Del, it says, I quote, in quotes, I quote, "Humboldt County First District Supervisor Rex Bone has touted the financial benefits to the county as well. Officials with the company say the project would provide up to three-hundred jobs during construction, fifteen permanent jobs, while generating millions of dollars in tax revenue, including seventy-six million in property taxes and nearly eight million in sales taxes over the life of the project." So that's a thirty-year project, I believe. I did wish to point out that the prior speaker here did not agree with the EIR. And that's something that should be taken into effect, unless I misunderstood what he said regarding impacts from that road. So you, again, may wish to look at the whole EIR from that perspective. There's going to be a lot of people possibly not agreeing with it. I assume this is a form of mitigation, should they agree with what Rio Del is saying and with what Tom Mattson is saying as far as the impact goes. And, you know, there's going to be all kinds of people out here who feel like they should... Are entitled to a piece of that pie, no matter what the figures are, give or take a little bit here. Again, I spoke earlier about the... One of the most valuable things for other areas here with this project is the viewscape. And you're finding major objections to the... To these monstrosities sticking up above the ridgeline. A lot of people said, "Well, you know, they've been assessed during the day, but what a night, when you have all these lights going around on them, which are required, I believe, to protect, you know, from things happening." So this is a very contentious project. Personally, I would like it to be assessed from many viewpoints. I think all of us would like to see local jobs be a priority on this project. Nordic Farms is considering signing an agreement with their aquaculture product... Project, which would give local jobs to the people. Have been working with the union. And I would like to see Terregen do the same thing, regarding all the different people in the area having a chance at a piece of this pie, not just one large union firm, and that's it. Everybody... All... Everybody should have a piece. It's big enough pie. That's, you know, three-hundred jobs. So let's disperse that out amongst our community. I strongly support that. And so that and environmental concerns will be shown. So how... I just also wanted to point out, this eight million dollars in sales tax revenue, it had been alleged to me was proposed by the powers that be in this project to be dispersed through Rio Del somehow. I guess if they put their corporate offices there, that didn't happen. I guess that message was never conveyed to the council, or I don't know if they were aware. Or maybe I've been misinformed by multiple people regarding that happening. And now, of course, goes into the county coffer instead. Quite a coincidence. Anyway, you're going to have other people who are entitled to other things, as far as being compensated somehow to remediate their loss of their viewscape. Strongly suggest you look at their things that they're going to bring to you, hopefully. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. Maybe we'll get a deal done here, but it's going to take the environmentalist backing and everybody participating.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Fennell?
Well, I think that no matter how this goes, if this project does wind up going forward, it's really important that we recognize there will be an impact on Monument Road. I just... Having driven it up there, I... There's no one can convince me that they're not going to be using Monument Road. And I think that this is a way that the county can help the City of Rio Del, if, in fact, this project moves forward. And we have talked with the Public Works Director, and the issue of maintenance was the one that Tom was concerned about, ongoing maintenance. However, a one-time investment in bringing the road up to standards that can take, even if it's just pickups and sedans going over that road, it'll be a lot more than now. And I understand from the CIO's perspective that we need to understand what kind of money will be available, should this project go forward. I think that that's a good way to move forward. So I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
I just have a... Is... In looking at sort of the purpose and foundation of this, this is sort of like a, I guess, a development fee, or not? Or is this just purely a sort of a pass-through? I mean, is this because we don't have development fees for, you know, in the county? Is this like our kind of ad hoc way of doing this, where other counties would just have fees that then they dedicate? Or am I a little off on that?
I would view it more as a tax-sharing agreement. We have tax-sharing agreements with the cities for property tax. And so that's how I view this, is that there's potential development impacting a city, and we would potentially share resources that we may acquire through that development.
Yet, we still do... We have... Is there anticipated development fees associated with this, as opposed to just maybe... Mr. Ford can address that. I don't know. Or maybe not. I don't know.
Well, yes, there would be fees.
Do we have an assessment of what that would be, what we think that might be, the development fees?
Not right now, but that could be part of this assessment as well.
Are you talking about building fees or taxes on the... I'm confused.
Well, you know, in many counties, you have fees associated with development that are associated for road-impact fees and/or schools and/or other fees. We don't have those. And so oftentimes, we're having these conversations with developers on an ad hoc basis to try and make up for the fact that we don't have those. And so I'm wondering if that's what kind of we're engaged in now, or do we anticipate to... Are we anticipating having some sort of negotiation for other fees later, and as opposed to a tax-sharing agreement, which doesn't actually increase... I mean, we're getting an increase in taxes, but we would get an increase in taxes for whatever development we get in terms of property taxes. But that's an ongoing thing versus the impact fees, you know, right up front, which we... I'm just wondering, do we have any impact fees that we are assessing for this, that we think would be assessed for this, assuming it's a project?
John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. So there, as you mentioned, there are no impact fees for traffic associated with this. The second way that fees may be paid is if there were the identification of environmental impact that needed to be mitigated. The mitigation that's currently in the EIR right now identifies that heavy trucks cannot use Monument Road, cannot go through the city. There is the ability for pickup-sized trucks to use the road to go through the city. That was not identified as being a significant adverse impact. The struggle that we have when it comes to fees is, what is the impact that's identified, and how can that be mitigated? Part of the struggle here is that the road, as I think was mentioned, nearly slid out in 2017. It's an existing condition. It's not a result of the project. This is not mitigation for the project. This is really something, as the CIO pointed out, where there is an opportunity that the county is receiving to get an increase in tax and sharing that with the community that is closest to the development.
On the item that they have deemed to be most important related to this project? And what... And by percent, what do we believe that percent is? It's two million out of...
Well, that's part of what we're trying to achieve here, is an analysis, because we don't know what the county is likely to receive yet. We've had numbers sort of thrown out in the air, and staff have not yet done an analysis. And so we would love to have that direction, to do an analysis, to see if this is even affordable to the county.
And if I could get the Public Works Director up here?
I would support that request.
That's what the motion is?
Yes, that's a...
Is... I know the 2017 site, but isn't there two FEMA sites on Monument? Aren't we waiting for the above... Above the 2017... Aren't we waiting for the above, above the 2017 site where there's, it's one lane also?
There is one site within the range that's been identified as a city as, as this project. Yes, I do believe there's multiple sites on that road and yes, we are still going through the approval process.
And do you have any idea what the total repair you have on those other sites?
It's about three-quarters of a million, I believe, on the site within this zone.
And the, the, the sites above it?
I don't have that off the top of my head, no.
Because the site above it's been on the FEMA project for, and the reason I know is that's all in the first district after we leave Ria Del. So, after the first, the next six miles up to the gate are mine. And the road does need work and has needed work and, and as Kyle and, and the people of Ria Del, the, most of the use now from the heavy equipment is from logging traffic and, and things like that, that have been using it for a long time.
Yeah.
So, but it does need some attention. So, I was just wondering, you know, would that be part of the process as we're trying to, to figure this out?
Well, any other work we do on that road has to compete with all the other roads within the county. And we simply don't have enough money to do all the roads. So, if the board wanted to earmark money for this road, we would appreciate that, but we would want to enter into some serious thought about the county contributing any of the road fund to further improvements on this road at the risk of other roads not getting improved that are already in a priority system such as Redwood Drive in Garberville, which is in a design phase for a major project. The volume on this road is actually pretty low for a county road and so, we have to wait, we have to weigh all of those things when we look at spending additional money. We could sink a lot of the county road fund into any single road the board wanted to pick at the detriment of the entire system.
Kyle, did you want to throw something else in there? Sure.
Deputy Mayor of City Ria Del, I just wondered with regard to the assessment if there was going to be a timeframe put on it or was there going to be an open-ended assessment? When you were?
I think the assessment will be done on a, we could put it as quickly as possible because the project is moving forward. I think, I think the desire and, and the need, I can tell you from after the city limit sign, so before the city limit sign also. So, I think there's a combined effort on this that, that is, that's fully aware.
Thank you.
And, and I think what we do is if to leave some of the issues is put the restrictions on, the problem being is, and I know I talked to, it, it's going to be hard to put limits on their trucks. And I think we can put the wind energy limits on their trucks, but when they see the logging trucks and the low beds going up back and forth, doing their, it's, it's just, it's, it's a fine line. And I think we, we'll have to dance that fine line and, and figure it out. But I think there, there is some resolve because, like, if, if I look at the EIR right, they're going to be basing their, their, their work area and everything else at the bottom of the hill there where they're coming in. So, I think, away from Monument. So, I think if they're going to access anything, they have to go through there. So, I, from what I've seen, I haven't talked to them about it, but sure, appreciate it. All right, it's been moved and?
Mr. Chair?
I just want to say one other thing. I, I want to underscore that we're talking about helping the city of Ria Del. It has been stated that as part of this project, they won't put that heavy traffic on there. But again, I will just reiterate, there is no way in the world that they're going to convince me the people are not going to be going up and down Monument Road. And, and in the final analysis, if this project does move forward, we have to absolutely recognize that.
Okay. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I fully support taking care of the road. I mean, I'm a big supporter of roads, just like Chairman Bone is and others. And I recognize Monument Road needs help. I, I drive it regularly and on my way out to the Matol. So, I see that, but I agree also with what was said that the current condition has to do with the failure of previous retaining structures that were wood, they're going to rot over time. Also, the existing traffic that's on there, you know, a bulk of the traffic is pretty heavy loads with log trucks and ranch trucks and things like that. And that's really been the dominant use of that road with some pickup trucks and some local residents. But that's why the road's in the condition that it's in. And I realize we all pay taxes through vehicle license fees and other things and that theoretically, and other resources end up going to roads to help with all these things. So, while I fully support the idea of taking care of this road, it seems incredibly premature to me to be discussing approval of, of this motion when we have the unknowns of the FEMA project. We have the unknowns of how much tax revenues would actually be generated from the wind project. And the wind project hasn't been approved yet. And as board members, we're required to maintain an unbiased opinion about projects until they come before us. And this project may or may not ever come before us. It may be approved to the planning commission and not appealed, although most people in the committee would agree that no matter what happens at the planning commission in the next couple of weeks, the project will probably be appealed to us and will probably end up on our lap. And in fact, we've already started setting a schedule for possible extra meetings in December. So, there goes our two, two meetings in December. Could easily become four meetings in December because there is a rush to trying to prove this before the end of the year. But again, those are very premature actions and, and I'm required to maintain an unbiased position on, on the wind project. So, how would we possibly approve this project for starting to spend money on analysis and other things towards a road project when we haven't even approved the project that might provide some revenues?
Supervisor Madron?
Excuse me, excuse me.
We're not approving it.
So, it just seems very?
Approving assessing it.
I understand, but that would be expenditure of money and in a premature way. And I do agree with you Supervisor Fennel that I do believe this project, if approved, would cause some impacts to Monument Road and that that should be a mitigation requirement of the project. And it would be a really kind of a bizarre thing to say that if a particular project is happening and it has an impact and therefore we need to mitigate for that and we're going to use the taxes from that project to provide the mitigation, that's not how that works. The project's supposed to mitigate for the impact. And I've had some constituents recently say, "Well, you know, I'm expanding my cannabis operation and I pay measure S excise taxes and I want the excise taxes to go towards mitigating the impacts of my cannabis operation." And it would be the same kind of thing and we just don't do that. We don't take the revenue from a project and use it to pay for the mitigation of that project. The mitigation is paid for by the developer. I mean, that's the standard of how that works. So, I, I just, again, I'm very supportive of wanting to help Ria Del and I would be very interested in this board considering how we might go about doing that. But after this project is determined whether it's moving forward or not, so that we can really make it in the proper time sequence, it seems very premature to me, just in a logical sense. Again, I support doing something for the road, but I'm struggling with that timing.
I think, I, I don't have quite the struggles because I look back, I just, I think the mitigation, whatever happens, I think we, I don't think we're talking, you know, putting staff on it for six months to figure it out. I think it's going to be a minor assessment. It's kind of funny, I kind of mirror this as the development down on Broadway where the city of Eureka said, "Hey, how about if we take the sales tax dollars to pay for the stoplights instead of making the, the actual propos, proponents or the people that are putting it in pay for it?" So, now they're taking the sales tax dollars and they did that previous. So, so what they were doing was, the cart is in front of the horse, but that's basically just finding out if the horse can actually pull the cart. And, and the other thing is, is if it's approved or disapproved, the project, I think the idea of having that extra arrow in your quiver, that we have an answer for Ria Del and the people of Ria Del and our public works, I think goes a long way. As far as property tax, our assessor is here, but I think through the state, they're already predetermined how much we can tax a wind turbine. Isn't that an already set fee? I'm going to ask her since she's here because it sounds like it's, it's an unknown and I don't think it's an unknown.
And while the assessor's coming up, I'll just say, not only do I want to support the city of Ria Del, I want to respect them. They made this request and we would like to assess what the cost would be.
Maureen, am I, am I right that I know that they don't negotiate the, the turbines? There's already a preset tax rate for turbines set up through the state of California?
There are guidelines from the Board of Legalization for the assessment of, of wind energy. What, it's not a set amount. If there are cost approach, cost approach or income approach is what we'd be looking at, neither of which, none of that information has been provided to us to be able to make an assessment or even a, you know, a guess. So, there are guidelines we would follow. We would also reach out to Kern, Riverside, San Diego County, those counties that already have a lot of wind energy going on to get some advice in some direction.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. And I think this assessment will just gather all that information with the help with the assessors and basically, as Supervisor Fennel said, alleviate some of the concerns of the road coming into Ria Del and alleviate some of my concerns for, for the upper part of Monument. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can understand Supervisor Madron's concern about premature, but the way I look at it, it's not premature, it's actually pre-planning. It's making sure that if the time comes that it does move forward, we don't have to go back and do the assessment, we will have that assessment done. So, I'm, I'm completely in support of moving forward with the assessment.
Through the chair.
Supervisor Wilson?
I'm going to support this only because I think it's information we should have in terms of that assessment, no matter what happens and no matter what requests come to us related to this. But I do have some concern about prejudging the, or what, I don't know if it's prejudging, but really declaring that you, that supervisors are already feeling that the final ER, EIR is inadequate in its analysis of the road. I find that a little bit, we got to, you, I'm just saying, we can't be, it's not, not, I don't think it's appropriate. Having not read the final EIR myself, I, I think we should be really careful about making those statements so emphatically about that analysis. So, I'm concerned about that and I don't know, I don't know where to go with that, but I really think that's, you know, we're supposed to, when, if that comes to us, it's on appeal, if it's coming to us, we're supposed to be quasi-judicial in our, in our review of that and making predeterminations before even reading the FEIR. I think we've got to be careful about that.
And I didn't, I'm not sure who touted it, I hope it wasn't me, but what I'm saying is on the, on the final analysis, I don't think, final analysis, we say that, I think final analysis is what they have brought forward. Now, everybody's going to get to speak, the planning commissioner's going to speak and they're going to be able to say if that final analysis on the road, if they feel it is inadequate, I think that's when they go back to them. So, I, I believe that's a great point you made that, that of the inadequacies, if you, if?
You're pushing into the place where I now have to clarify, which is that I, so two supervisors have said that they do not believe the analysis about the impacts to the road and that is prejudicial. We got to be real careful about that. So, that's, please, I just, that, is that, I hope that's clear enough.
All right. I think what we're, and I don't know, I think what we're trying to do here is alleviate the fears and, and the concerns of Ria Del and know that we have their back, I think, is, is what I'm voting on. So, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Four one, thank you. Okay, planning and building. The mobile. Yeah. We do have an 11 a, 11:00 AM time set, so I don't know. We'll start, we can start this and we'll go from there. Mobile home rent stabilization, stabilization ordinance implementing rules and procedures.
Thank you, Chair Bone, members of the board of supervisors, John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. As Chair Bone mentioned, this is the guidelines for implementation of Measure V. Before I, I talk about this any further and in the interest of time, I, I am aware that there may be a request for a continuance on this. And perhaps before I go too far into this, that it would be prudent to see if the board would like to pursue a continuance rather than getting into the discussion.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes, I am the primary person that is suggesting that we consider a continuance. And the reason I'm saying this is that what's in front of us today is intended to try and provide some clarification to the guidelines, to try and resolve what has been some unclarity that came out of the ordinance that was passed by the residents, citizens of Humboldt County. And I do appreciate the due diligence of staff in working to try and understand what have been the questions, what have been the problems, what's been working, what's not, and trying to come up with some suggestions for guidelines of how that might be improved. But this is a citizen initiative that created this. And as soon as I realized it was on the agenda on Friday, I did send out some notice to individuals that I know have been involved with the planning department around this issue for some time and have a lot of concerns. And frankly, four days' notice doesn't, doesn't do it. It has not provided an opportunity for members of the mobile home parks and communities to, to know that this is even happening. Again, I don't blame the department, but I frankly had thought that what we were going to do is come up with some draft guidelines and then hold a workshop with the mobile homeowners and those that really brought forward this initiative to make sure that their voices are being heard in a way that is more than just a four-day notice with a small three-minute comment at a, a public hearing today. And so, I don't think this is something that's so urgent that we need to do today. And I would very much appreciate the support of continuing this item so that we could work with the planning staff to do a workshop with the mobile homeowners to make sure that we're getting the best input we can from the community to, to move forward on solutions. And I did, there was provided for you this morning, some comments that were provided by the Humboldt Mobile Home Owners Coalition, and there are some significant changes. You know, one of the big sticking points is who gets to vote for representatives in these mobile home parks and who has to pay the $5 monthly fee and those kinds of things. So, there's some sticking points that have not been resolved here. And I really firmly believe that we have a responsibility to our residents and community to take the time and reach out to them and get that input before we proceed. So, with that, I'll see how my colleagues feel about this request.
Well? Supervisor Fennel?
Well, I will say that looking at the agenda item over the weekend, I, I expressed to the CIO that it wasn't clear to me, that it wasn't spelled out enough in terms of the changes that are proposed and what was existing. I do recall when this item came before us prior to going on the ballot, making this, the remark that it was styled for the city and not for our area. But that is the nature of citizen ordinances or, or votes. And so, I think I would support waiting some time. I obviously want to support hearing from the public who are here to talk about it. But if we need more time to iron it out, I'd be happy to give you that.
Well, I think, coming fresh off a mobile homeowners meeting, that was quite entertaining and quite confusing. Maybe we should look at this. I, I do wonder, I'm wondering, so only people that are paying the $5 would have a say and they'd have a say for everybody else in the park? Is that?
The way the initiative was written, it seems clear to me, but not to everybody, that the intent was that if you were not exempt, if you were covered by the ordinance, which basically means that you have a lease less than a year, I believe, that you are covered by the ordinance in terms of protection of rent raises and all those kinds of things. There's a lot of micro detail there. But if you have a lease longer than a year, you're not covered by the ordinance and therefore you're not required to pay the $5 a month fee. And many would argue that therefore those individuals should not be able to be the representative for the residents in the mobile home park that are covered by the ordinance. They should not be able to be that representative, nor should they be able to vote for that representative because they're exempt, they're not covered by the ordinance. And so, there's a big sticking point there in terms of how that's supposed to work. I also agree with you Supervisor Fennel that, you know, and I think staff made this point. point, that this was drafted from a city ordinance and I think staff have done a good job of kind of pointing out, here's the various types of mobile home parks, the various sizes, and we have kind of a broad spectrum on that. And, you know, what we want to do is avoid unintended consequences of actually causing raises of rents and other kinds of things. And so again, I just think that there's nothing so urgent that would require us not to back up for a month or so, have a workshop with the mobile homeowners and the existing representatives and see if we can't come to agreement on how to move forward with this guideline and some changes. So I hope that helps clarify.
Open up the public comment.
I'm Jim Aducey and I live in Ocean West Mobile Home Park and I was...
Jim, can you speak a little closer into the...
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, there you go.
Just lift the whole...
Just hold it.
There you go, close enough. Okay, I'm Jim Aducey and I live in Mobile Home Park, Ocean West, Space 141. And I was, I worked pretty hard on Measure V and put some money into it and a lot of time. And although I wasn't one of the major helpers, my heart went with everybody. Anyway, I would just request that we do, as Supervisor Madron is asking, and please table this issue until the stakeholders, us, can have a meeting and then we can get ready and talk to all of you and, you know, work this out. I don't think it's going to be that complicated if everybody's, you know, working together. And I think if we can't come to some kind of resolution together, then my request would be that we follow Hillary Mosher's guidelines. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kansawoski, personally, I'm opposed to rent control, but I was in favor of the concept of Measure V. It was a certain group of people that we felt, I felt, needed some protection from people that could take advantage of them and they couldn't do anything about it. Some people bemoaned the fact that I was on the taxpayer league, or am now an officer on the taxpayer league, but at the time, we had the lobbyists from the mobile home park, people coming to us wanting us to support their initiative. The other group didn't come and make a presentation, so there was just one group in the room, but we voted and we voted to not participate as far as supporting the opposition to this measure. Sometimes the taxpayer league does things that make sense. Some people feel maybe that's not true. But I do, the time is not of the essence here, getting more of an input, fixing something that obviously is ambiguous. I mean, it's been the court, I think, once from the county's perspective or something happened there, it was the court for interpretation is my understanding. And no reason to go quick on this particular issue. So slow play it, strongly support the taking the time and I, so I would nominate Steve Madron in Virginia, no, to sit on the sub, do whatever you're going to do, put something together amongst you guys, whatever it takes, you know, and get the input from the people and come to a consensus that we all can work with. So that's part of your job also, you're peacemakers, aren't you up there?
I'm the Chair of the Humboldt Mobile Home Owners Coalition that sponsored the Measure V Citizens Initiative. Here, if we could get this distributed, is a copy of an email from the planning department's Measure V Ordinance liaison. It clearly states that she does not like Measure V. That's part of our problem. This effort on your agenda today outlines only a few of the guidelines that this county needs in order to effectively administer and enforce the intention and spirit of this law and prevent county employees from inflicting their personal biases upon those of us living in mobile home parks. One example, after Measure V passed, my park owners filed a fair return petition under the measure to raise our rents by 100%. The county spent thousands of taxpayer dollars hiring an expert to analyze the petition and sent it back as incomplete. Although the corporation failed to resubmit a completed petition as required, the county spent thousands of more taxpayer dollars allowing it to go forward to hearing in Sacramento despite us begging the county not to go forward on an incomplete petition. Residents in my park had to pool our spare resources for an attorney. In the middle of the process, my park owner sold it to another corporation and the county allowed the petition to be transferred with the sale despite clear language in Measure V allowing a sole park owner to file a petition. So when we park, so then we park residents had to go up against two sets of owners, their attorneys and their expert witnesses. And guess what? The administrative law judge in Sacramento found that the park owners had not submitted a complete fair return petition, so they could not prevail. What a waste. Now we're asking you to make sure that the people you hire to enforce the laws of the county do it appropriately without bias by writing guidelines for Measure V that leave no doubt for anyone regarding how they shall be enforced and what penalties shall be incurred. But let's take a little time to do it, let's not rush it in four days. We like what's been written by the planning department so far and they're important, all of the things they've written. But please table this now to allow for at least one stakeholder meeting to assure that the guidelines are more complete and include more examples like the one I've given you because there are several more. If not, please do include the additions we have submitted that should be in your packets, yes? Thank you so much and thank you for the work that you do.
All right, we do have a time set. Thank you for the email. I will give full support to Paula Mushrush, I understand she has been given this duty and after sitting through a couple meetings regarding Measure V about who has an 11-month lease, who has a five-year lease, and looking at 60 residents not having a clue of what to make heads or tails and watching their rents rise, there has to be some sort of clarification. I fully understand that.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ford?
In the sake of time, I withhold anything I was going to say.
All right. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to continue this item to a time uncertain, to allow for a stakeholder meeting to occur so we can get the input and come back to this board at that time.
Second.
Okay, move in a second.
Please?
I also support staff on this in regards to, it's true that the substance, the, the staff is saying they're uncomfortable, do not like the vagueness of the ordinance as written, but I will say that the substance of what is written here is that the staff wants to support the outcome, the intended outcome of the ordinance and that they're working hard to try and do that. And so I want to clarify that, that the staff member mentioned here is actually trying to work towards making it stronger and more effective to keep rents down and affordable for people in the parks.
Fully stood, understood. And this email does not reflect the conversation. There is an email before this from Mr. Scott, there's an email after that that relates that fact and showing their appreciation to our staff member. I was up there with four staff members for two and a half hours and I'm not sure if we had any, and I don't know if, could we have a list of who's on the, who has voted onto the mobile homeowners rent, mobile homeowners, Mobile Home Owners Coalition? Is that countywide or is that just out of the McKinleyville Park?
Countywide.
Could we get a list of the members?
I can do this afternoon.
Great, that'd be great, just so we know which parks are covered and who we, so who we know who to talk, and I can't, I just, please, thank you.
I just want to tell you exemption is a state exemption.
Great, thank you. With that, it is 11 o'clock, we have a time set. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Hang on, we had a motion in a second.
I'll need to vote.
Motion, second, to continue this? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you Chair. It's the intent of the board to meet in closed session on four matters. The first is pursuant to government code sections 54954.5 and 54957 to consider public employee performance evaluation for the position of county council. And there are three matters pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, the matter of Jeffrey Blank v. County of Humboldt, case number CV190389, Jeffrey Blank v. County of Humboldt, case number 1:19-CV-3055, and then the matter of Jeffrey Blank v. Lisa DiMatteo et al., case number DR190340.
Thank you. Any public comment on this?
Kansawoski, I did want to point out to the public that the supervisors did have a closed session, meeting on closed session items on Monday, so they were here another day this week already. So you do get kudos for that credit, for having to come in on those. And again, that if you do, if you do ever switch over to something, that would be something you could consider also, two days in a row if you needed to for, anyway. Change it to Monday, I don't care, we'll meet on Monday and then Rex won't have to wait around, you know, on closed sessions, he could be out of here right now if he had to go. So that's always doable too. There's no box up here, is there? Anyway, it's been over seven months. Jeffrey Blank's being, he's still cashing his paychecks, I assume, hopefully. Part of the problem we have here in when you have an investigation, the investigation, which is probably what you're discussing, part of which during this thing, needs to have a contract that has a completion date. I mean, I sat here and, you know, watching the process and started in March, there wasn't any completion date then. If you have an open-ended contract, and I believe didn't see that in the contract, time is of the essence on these things. And again, when you're discussing these kind of things, we do have capable, I always thought, Rex knows who it is, a capable local investigator, an investigation for a local person might only take one week or two weeks because they're here, they can focus, you don't have travel time. So in the future, when you're doing an investigation, you know, unless there's a conflict of interest, I would try and find a local investigator, but that could save you a whole bunch of money. It's kind of one of those, not necessarily hindsight things. You've got these topics, I highly recommend you try and do something, otherwise my perception is you have someone being paid to stay at home and has nothing to do but work on their own cases and appeal after appeal after appeal and go through the whole process as far as that goes. It's going to cost the county a lot of money. I don't know how much it's cost so far, but it's adding up and the quicker you pull the trigger on these things and do things in a timely manner, the less it costs all of us. I know government goes slow, but, you know, there's no reason for it to be going this slow, in my opinion. And settle one of the things or something, I don't know. You have, I assume competent counsel that meets with you each time you're here, or if you hired somebody from out of the area, they have to fly up and so you're kind of winging it all the time. But I want you to understand one thing, the lawyers get paid more the longer this goes on. So you always have to take their advice with a little bit of grain of salt, don't you? Thank you for the opportunity. We don't want to be the early retirement fund for some lawyers out of the area. At least we get some of the money if you have local guys.
Thank you. We will go on to closed session now, thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to county council.
Thank you Chair. I'm informed there's nothing to report out from closed session.
All right, and with that, we are going to, it's very rare in the same timeframe you get a couple leaders of our community pass away, but Russ Britt from Britt Lumber and Hu Hu and everything else passed away at the age of 76, I believe. And I think for the years of service he gave to the community, I know his love of Humboldt, basically athletics as a whole and his support of the community was second to none. I know he supported me quite a bit out at Redwood Fields and Redwood Empire Little League and so we are, we're going to adjourn in his memory and we're also going to go in the memory of Joseph William Coaches. Joe Coach was the Foundry Shop, the Blacksmith Shop in Ferndale. If I'm not mistaken, I think he's probably the oldest, longest-serving vendor storefront in Ferndale under single ownership. He's been involved in everything down there. He brought the Blacksmith Society there five years ago. They're actually coming there again this year. That's an international gathering of blacksmiths, brings three to 400 people in and Joe just passed away recently also. So in his memory, we'll be closing in Joe Coaches and Russ Britt's memory. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn.